As the mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the November 11th, 2021 Stanton City Council Work Session to Order. The first item, I'll entertain a motion for November 11th, 2021, to appoint Acting Clerk of Council.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that Robin Wallace be appointed as Acting Clerk of Council for the recording of the proceedings of council at its work session and regular meeting of November 11th, 2021, and that she be authorized and directed to sign and execute such documents as are necessary and proper regarding the presence of council members, a quorum, consideration, and voting.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Holmes.
I second that.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Wallace, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Well, thank you for agreeing to help us out, Ms. Wallace. This morning, I received a request from Counselor Mead to participate remotely in the November 11th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Counselors Mead remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three, I move to allow Counselor Mead to remotely participate in the November 11th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a medical condition.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Holmes.
I second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Wallace, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Mead, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
Here we go.
Muted. Looks like she's muted.
Can't hear us.
Can hear us.
Can't hears.
Yeah, turn something on. She not in there? He's gone.
I can't hear anything from council chambers.
How about now?
Can you hear us now? Counselor Mead, can you hear us now?
Evidently not.
No, apparently not.
Come, silence is back.
Can you hear us now, Ms. Mead? Now you're muted.
I can hear you now, Steve. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Mead, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
342 Sherwood Avenue, Stanton.
Right. Could everyone on council, as well as the audience here, Counselor Mead?
Yes, yes.
Everybody saying yes. All right. Thank you and welcome. All right. The next item is item number one, a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam.
Counselor Darby.
I will be abstaining from this as I was not present at the last meeting.
This is just the agenda.
Agenda.
This is just for the agenda.
Excuse me. Sorry. Thought it was minutes.
No problem.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
After consultation with the city manager and the city attorney, we can consolidate item four of the work session agenda to item G of the regular session agenda. Therefore, I move to remove item four of the work session agenda and consolidate it into item G of the regular meeting agenda.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second, this is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead has second. Any further discussion? Okay. So what we're doing is we're going to move this item to the regular meeting agenda for a discussion and consideration. All right. Ms. Wallace, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. The next item is item number two, a presentation by Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport. Mr. Rosenberg.
Mayor Oaks. I apologize. We also need a motion now to approve the amended work session and regular meeting agendas.
Did I miss that? My apologies.
All right. Madam Mayor.
No, we didn't. We voted.
We voted on the amendment.
The amendment, correct.
Right. But now we need to vote on the agenda.
Let's do it.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda with the following changes as to the work session as far as the deletion of item four and the addition of item G into the regular meeting.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Counselor Holmes.
I second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Blair, for the point of order and the explanation. All right. Ms. Wallace, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Now, on to item number two, a presentation by Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to welcome this evening Greg Campbell, the Executive Director of the Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport. Mr. Campbell joins us annually to update council on new developments at the region's airport, and we're happy to have you with us this evening, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Mayor Oaks, thank you, members of council. It's good to be with you all this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk to you this evening about the regional airport, give you an annual update. With me tonight is Maggie Reagan, who is the city of Stanton's representative to the Airport Commission. The Airport Commission is a great example of regional collaboration as the city has partnered for over 60 years as part of the Airport Commission, along with the cities of Stanton, Waynesboro, and Harrisonburg, and the counties of Augusta and Rockingham. That regional collaboration has worked really well in establishing, building, and maintaining, and evolving the regional transportation asset that we have, that's the Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport. So I have a lot of information to go through tonight. I'll just say that if any of this piques your interest and you want a little more information after tonight, please don't hesitate to follow up with me directly or through staff. I'll be glad to expand on any of this. As I mentioned, Stanton's role in the Airport Commission is very important, and we really appreciate your support. Your participation, the city's participation, has been instrumental since day one, actually since before day one, since the inception of the Airport Commission. Because it was in 1953 that the then Stanton Airport, which is, was located on what is now the McQuade Dyken Manufacturing Facility site, was sold. And it was not much of an airport. It was just a grass field. But the city council, along with some leaders in the business community and other interested citizens, realized that this aviation thing was becoming a big deal. And for our valley to be competitive in terms of economic development, quality of life, access by air was going to be an important factor going forward. So that led to the regional collaboration. And the city of Stanton gets credit because the city of Stanton really led this effort, along with what was then the Stanton West Augusta Chamber of Commerce. City also led the way with some major financial support and was designated the official sponsor and fiscal intermediary for the Airport Commission in the early days in 1956. It's for this reason that the city of Stanton, to this day, is the city, the locality of record with the Department of Transportation, the Federal Aviation Administration. And literally, as you connect on a United Flight through Dulles or Chicago, oftentimes it will list our destination as Shenandoah Valley, and in parentheses, Stanton. And it is because you all stepped up in the early days and became the locality of record with the Airport Commission. So I just wanted to touch on that. The airport construction was completed, and I guess take a bow. So in 1958, the airport opened. It's a very modest facility, as you can see in the pictures at the top. You can see an old photo, too, which was the surveyor engineer, Mr. Randolph, who designed both our airport and the airport in Charlottesville. And the guy standing beside him was a city resident, Dr. Erskine Sproul, who was a longtime chairman of the Airport Commission. You can also see in the picture to the right, a modest farmhouse, which served as the original airline passenger terminal building, and some hangars and a runway, which is much shorter than it is today. Commercial air service commenced February 1st, 1960, a couple of years after the facility was open with Piedmont Airlines. And we've had continuous air service, sometimes better than others, but continuous since 1960. Speaking of air service, that's a good place for us to start. And I want to talk a little bit about air service. I want to talk about what's happened in the last 19 months, because the impacts on the travel industry, the airline industry have been significant. But also want to talk to you about a very important part of the airport, which is the general aviation, corporate and business side of the airport. And then, and then kind of wind down, talking about a little bit of what we see in the near term future, or the Airport Commission sees in the future, and some of the plans it has to continue evolving the facility to meet the community's needs. So airline deregulation happened in the late 70s, early 80s. It was not particularly kind to a lot of small, small communities in this community. At that time, it was much smaller than it is today, particularly in terms of what we see today in terms of business industry and population. That was, it was a challenging period, but I'll just fast forward to say, our community really had a significant win in the spring of 2018, when the Airport Commission, after many years of working hard to tell the story of this community and how we deserved good, solid, well-connected air service, actually landed that for the community with the, with the entrance of United Airlines and their partner, SkyWest, in the spring of 2018. This was pivotal for the community. It was the first time we'd have 50-seat jet service to two major hubs by United, both Chicago and Washington Dulles, fully integrated. This is United Airline service. It's not some, some regional partner that has a code share arrangement or something. This is United Airline service in the valley. So this, this, this really represents the best period of air service in the valley. And it's, it's worked out really, really well. Passenger traffic, because of this new service rebounded dramatically for two years, resulted in some additional flights being added in December 2019. And we all know what happened in the spring of 20. But things are coming back. And just this past summer, in July of 2021, we set an all-time record for the number of airline passengers that came through the facility. Just rolling up what's happened in the last three years, four years, soon to be four years with SkyWest and United. The first year they were there, we saw 150% increase in airline passengers. The second year, a year-over-year comparison, a 44% increase. And when you look at 2020, February versus 2019, February, we were still on track to continue growing at that rapid pace, another 35% increase. And then COVID and the pandemic. But as you can see that last slide, we've rebounded nicely, actually posted an increase over 2019 this summer. This might look like an airline route map that you would see that shows where airlines fly. This is actually a snapshot from January of 2020 that compares January 2020 to January of 2019. These are all the nonstop routes domestically that disappeared because of the results of the pandemic. There was a significant pull down in service domestically. Pleased to report, because we have such a solid airline partner, United Airlines and their partner, SkyWest, we maintained the bulk of our service throughout the pandemic, and they provided exceptionally reliable service throughout the time. The big four airlines, Delta, United, and American Southwest, lost a combined over $30 billion, and that includes government aid, which was significant. It continues to be a very challenging time for the airlines as they await the return of business travelers, which is really where their revenue is derived. Much of what happened with air travel in our community is what happened system-wide for United and nationwide with other airports. The challenges we faced were very similar. We decided this was a time to use a pandemic term for us to really pivot and to really talk about the benefits of flying from S H D versus some of the larger metro airports, and really remake some of our marketing efforts, rebrand the airport, and, and take the opportunity to reintroduce folks that maybe hadn't used the service locally in a number of years, because much of the service around us that maybe they had had to drive to in the past had disappeared in the, in the past year. So we wanted to make sure that they were fully aware that throughout this period, that our service had remained well-connected to the two United hubs. It was a less crowded travel experience, and we had implemented some additional measures to ensure the cleanliness at the airport that would match what United was doing onboard. This was a program we launched in, in the summer of 20 and is, is still running at this time. We also, as part of that pivot, realized that system-wide business travelers were the ones that were not flying. And even though in the spring of 21, we started to see a resurgence in traffic, it was largely leisure traffic. So we partnered with United and SkyWest for much of the past year to try to appeal to the tourism sector, to pitch the valley as, as an alternative tourism destination. One of our biggest successes was a Chicago-centric digital campaign. Our friends at United and SkyWest paid for this campaign. We just had to provide them with content, which I will tell you was a lot about Stanton, because Stanton's rich in things that, that people would find interesting in tourism. So they also shared data with us. I won't get into that, but it was a very successful program. I feel quite sure that some of the tourists you saw around town in the last year or so in Stanton were Chicago residents coming to the valley and, and checking things out. We also took this opportunity to rebrand the airport, update, refresh all of our marketing materials, which included a new logo, new website. I would encourage you to check it out. In a business where over half the passengers that use the airport do not live in the valley but come here from elsewhere, having a significant digital presence is incredibly important. So we have made significant investments in our digital efforts, including our new website. Just to roll up kind of what's happened with passenger traffic in a graphic way. So this is, this is 2018, the start of the United service. You can see a dip, which is really seasonal. We always see a little bit of a downturn as kids go back to school and business, business travel's not, not really taken off until October. And then the holidays, with the exception of about two weeks in November and December, starts a slowdown for us all. You can see that year-over-year comparison in the growth. Here's the pandemic line. And if you were to, matter of fact, I had it on there and I took it off because it gets too busy. If you were to overlay the TSA passenger counts for the same period throughout the whole U.S., the line almost overlays perfectly with ours, as far as the trend line. We've performed much like our peers. That's an important reason why we rolled out the S H D cares program. It's a very challenging time for the airlines, and we wanted to make sure that our market performed as well for the airlines as other communities did. Airlines implement service, maintain service, grow service in communities where passengers show up. So we wanted to make sure throughout the pandemic that we did our part as a community to, to show the airlines it was a viable market throughout. And then we see in the spring of 2021, the rollout of vaccines, some confidence returned to travel. And you can see we surged to an all-time record in July of this year, and followed that sort of seasonal trend. And actually, in October, got close to, to our 2019 numbers. This is not a public document necessarily yet, but it's, it's a working paper and it's accurate. I grabbed this the other day. This is a report from the Virginia Department of Aviation and their ongoing Virginia Air Transportation System Plan, which shows through the end of July, how the airports in Virginia, all nine commercial airports in Virginia have recovered compared to their 2019 numbers. We all see 2020 as kind of a write-off. So we're all kind of using 2019 as the benchmark. And when will we get back to that? You can see the Shenandoah Valley's back at 115% of our 2019 numbers. We're actually doing a little better through July, and that's continued into the fall. And you can see we're, we're clearly upfront. We're very proud of that. We're proud of the efforts our staff undertook to keep the facility moving along. General aviation, this is an important role the airport plays in the community. I think you all are very aware of it. It's a, it's a very robust part of the operation. It's over 90% of our operations that happen at the airport. We have about 80 operations a day. There's an operation as a takeoff or a landing during the week. A big chunk of those, as you see in the pictures, are business and corporate aircraft. This sector played, even though we saw a decline in business travel during the pandemic, this part of the airport saw actually a bit of an increase in activity during the pandemic because it played a critical role in moving essential workers, parts for manufacturing facilities, healthcare workers and resources, those kinds of things in and out of the valley in a timely way, where either they didn't feel comfortable doing it on the airlines or the airline route networks did not support the travel that they needed to do. So the airport and this segment played a critical role. Here's a roll-up of the companies that we saw through the facility in about the last 18 months. I think you'll recognize some household names there. Some are larger employers that have made big investments in this community, and they were very dependent before the pandemic, and maybe even more so during the pandemic, on the regional airport to provide close-in access to their investments here in the valley. Access to our community is critical. In terms of economic development, sure, if you ask Mr. Vaughn, his staff, it is critical in attracting quality investment and business expansion. Quite simply put, if we don't have close-in access, we're not on the list of potential sites. It's also more recently an issue with talent, attraction, retention, and quality of life. Just in the last year, we're getting more and more calls from folks that are moving here that can now remotely work, but they're really interested because they're going to have to get back to corporate headquarters for meetings. They're still going to have to travel some, and they really find the service a real benefit. Taking a quick look at the future going forward, our capital program, we have continued and stayed the course with our capital program. The airport continues to grow both airline and general aviation, and the commission has recognized that we needed to stay the course with our capital improvements to make sure that the facility continues to evolve, to meet the needs of the community. And so I just want to cover very quickly our capital program. 2017, 2018, the commission wrapped up an extensive master plan update showing capital improvements for the next 20 years. This is a required process and document that the commission has to go through to satisfy the Federal Aviation Administration and the state, the Virginia Department of Aviation. They fund a large portion of these improvements, and they require that there be a master plan developed that makes sense and that they approve of before committing the funds. The first thing we have to do coming out of a master plan is create the environmental assessment for all these projects to make sure that they're all clean. We, we refer to phase one as the next five years, and we are already well underway with projects in phase one. The, the projects shown in blue are projects that are underway. So some taxiway apron pavement construction to facilitate some new hangar construction, which is the next item. The commission will soon break ground on two 14,000-square-foot corporate hangars to house business aircraft. We have a waiting list of those that want to place their aircraft here. Also, we're going to see the construction of about a 50,000-square-foot large hangar by Aviation and Aerospace Company that's based here in the valley at their cost. They'll be building a facility under a long-term land lease with the commission. The building will eventually revert ownership back to the commission. Replacing the fuel farm, which is a little over 30 years old, stores all the jet fuel and aviation gasoline. And we have just wrapped up the design for rehabilitation of the runway. That project will happen next summer and will be very complicated, as the work will have to be done between midnight and 6:00 a.m. And then just some other pavement rehabilitations, where hopefully by the end of the first quarter of 2022, all 200 airfield lighting fixtures will convert to LED. And we, we are working on some land acquisition to protect the approach surfaces to the airport and provide for future expansion. This is just a snapshot of the master plan. And this is the Shenandoah Valley Aviation Technology Park. You've heard a lot about it. Two of the hangars that I mentioned that the commission is soon to break ground on, and the one by the private developer are in this area. We're really excited about this. Much of the infrastructure and site work has been completed over the last 18 months, and we're excited to move forward with this and, again, meet the needs of the business community that want to house their airplanes at the airport. Hopefully, I've stayed fairly close to my time, Mayor Oaks, and...
Looks like it. You're doing very well. Are there any questions by council members?
Greg, how many flights you have going out?
There are four airline operations a day between Chicago and Dulles.
The four to each side?
No, two, two.
Two-way?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
And still, Greg, you plan on, there's no plans to change the free parking or whatever? Because that's like...
No, sir. That's, that's no plans to change that anytime soon. Thank you for mentioning that, too. Yet another benefit, flying local.
Absolutely.
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor.
Question, couple of questions. Mr. Campbell, when do you anticipate, and do you anticipate, that corporate travelers will, will come back the way they used to be? Or has the pandemic changed corporate travel permanently?
It depends on who you ask.
Well, I'm asking you.
The crystal ball's a little, little, little cloudy.
Yeah, I got that.
But, you know, I will tell you that this summer, business bookings with what United shared with us were very strong going into the fall. But then when the Delta variant popped up, a lot of those plans got changed, and a lot of business travel was canceled for the fall. And it's, it's continued. Even though we're filling airplanes, it's much more leisure passenger than, than, than business travel. And that's, that's system-wide. We're hopeful that, you know, we're seeing the last of the surge and that we can get COVID in the rearview mirror. I think that's going to be the key to when companies feel comfortable sending their folks out there. I know a lot of people are eager to get back out there. There's a lot of questions about, you know, the impacts of digital meetings. And I think, you know, it may have some impact, but I'm, I'm one of those believers that there are certain things you just need to do in person, and certain business transactions and conferences, and certainly vacations you can't do virtually. So I'm optimistic that the hit won't be too bad, and that we'll see a good return. But most folks are thinking 2023.
Thanks. And I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The capital improvements plan for the airport is, looks like pretty significant expenditures. Are, are those expenditures funded by the airport authority and dependent on revenues from the airport? Or are those, are, is the funding going to be borne by the localities that support the authority?
So for non-revenue-producing projects, the Airport Commission has been very successful in obtaining federal and state grants that in most cases will cover 98% of the cost of improvements. So runways, taxiways, lighting systems. We get into revenue-producing things like hangars. The Airport Commission amortizes those costs through a bond issue. And the revenues from those that store the airplanes there goes to retire that debt and provide a little incremental revenue. So it depends on the nature of the project. But I will tell you, the contribution from the five-member jurisdictions, we're very proud of this. We've grown revenues. We've held the line on expenses over the years, particularly during COVID. We've not asked for an increase in, I think, about 16 years now. We've kept it level funding. And I just want to close by saying, because I think I'm running out of time, I want to give a lot of credit to members of the Airport Commission who were steady or there for the staff and me throughout this. Also, our staff, they really, really stepped up through this. We're a 365/24/7 operation. We're not a large team, but they're a very high-performing team. And they, they did a good job of taking care of each other and protecting the operational integrity of the airport, which was so critical for some of those movements that were happening even in the middle of the night during the last 19 months. So I want to thank them.
Claffey.
You had mentioned it. You wanted to acquire some additional acreage around the golf, I mean, around the airfield. How many acres and what percent are you talking about compared to what you already have?
Currently, we have about 430 acres. Actually, we closed on another 20-acre space. I think we're at 450, which was in the Long Airport Road, between Airport Road and the Aviation Technology Park. So we now own all that property. The balance of the acquisitions, it's not large in terms of acreage. Most of it, we have enough acreage to develop facilities. Most of the acquisition is what's called navigation easements to protect the approach surfaces so people don't build or construct things in the approaches and thereby hamper the operational integrity of the airport. And then, and, and along with that, the FAA wants us to expand the, the boundaries of the property we control, both on the north and the south of the approach to the runways. They want us to have a little more control over that, so that we're not battling issues with a cell tower, something popping up in those, in that airspace. So not, not large in terms of acres, but, but certainly important. And the FAA will fund, and the state will fund 98% of those acquisitions.
Great. Vice Mayor Robertson.
Greg, I mean, you just said that and it brought up another question. You own the acreage around, but has, do you own acreage further on in case the airport would grow, that you could extend that runway, so you could get larger planes in if need be?
Yes, sir. We do, we do have a good bit of property to grow into. So it's not like there's any need that's holding anything up or will hold up anything in the 20-year window with the master plan, really. I mean, we have the majority of what we need. It's just mostly in those approach surfaces. That little piece of land for the tech park, the, where the access road comes in the center of it, there was a sliver about 20 acres after the new airport road was constructed. We didn't own. We closed on that today. Funny you should ask. That, that was a critical piece. That was something we really needed to feel fully developed the aviation technology part. But other than that, it's mostly, the acquisition is mostly tied to, to, to the approaches. We have, we have a good bit to grow into.
I remember, I reckon it's still true. I remember when I was on rescue squad all the time and, and serving that it was the old saying that God forbid it ever happened that Air Force One could land.
Yes.
Couldn't take off. You have to strip it down to, in just a little bit of fuel to get it back, but.
It's one of the longer runways in the Commonwealth. We routinely have large jets like seven thirty sevens and air buses with JMU sports teams, charters and that kind of thing. They have no trouble at all.
Mr. Campbell, I know we're running a little bit over, but I do have to say I attended a meeting out at the airport not too awfully long ago and it was a very welcoming atmosphere and it was very clean.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Greg.
All right. The next item is item number three, Shenandoah Community Capital Fund Annual Report. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to welcome Debbie Irwin, the Executive Director of SCCF, who joins us again this year to present the organization's annual report.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Really excited to reintroduce you to SCCF. So back in two thousand and eight, the great Council of SCCF along with some Maggie Reagan and some other great members got together during our first great recession crisis and said, we need to do something for the entrepreneurs and small businesses in Stanton. So Stanton Creative Community Fund was born. And so thanks to those efforts over the past fourteen years, we've been able to grow and expand and really expand our reach to other entrepreneurs across the entire Shenandoah Valley. So with that expansion, we have since changed our name to Shenandoah Community Capital Fund. So new name, bigger impact, but same mission to serve and support the entrepreneurs all across our region. So a couple of notes from some of our clients, you'll see them over the years. Happy to share these with you more. I know you saw them in your packet as well. One that I do really want to note is both Sean with Panoramic InfoSec and Lissandra, those are both Stanton residents. Sean joined our new program Startup Shenandoah Valley in this past year and has been able to produce quite a bit of revenue since then and create some great jobs. A lot of his work is of a classified nature since he's doing cybersecurity work. So pandemic, let's talk pandemic. So you guys partnered with us quite a bit during twenty twenty with the first thing being you helped us draw down an additional hundred thousand dollars from the SBA to lend out to Stanton businesses. So there's a fifteen thousand dollar grant that you gave us that is a requirement for our loan loss reserve in order to draw down that money. We lent that a hundred thousand dollars exclusively in Stanton to eighteen Stanton businesses. Happy to report all eighteen of those businesses are still open. We did do some other lending to Stanton businesses through our other loan funds. Ninety percent of those businesses are still in operation. So we lost three businesses within the past year that were Stanton businesses. You also know that we are hit by another disaster in August of twenty twenty-one. And so overnight we said, let's make it GoFundMe. We are like, maybe we'll get twenty thousand and we'll give two thousand dollars to ten businesses. So it'll be great. Lo and behold, our surprise and I shouldn't be shocked by the amount of support that the city of Stanton brought, but we raised a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That was distributed to twenty-seven businesses, mostly across Lewis Street and in the wharf as well as over towards the watering can. And so that had a huge benefit and all of those businesses have been able to recoup in one way or another with some of them finding new locations and others of them being able to reopen quickly in order to salvage some of their revenues after already being hit by a pandemic.
Thank you for doing that.
It was, yeah, yeah, I would have never expected that. But it was, it was a really good lesson in what you should do when you're randomly thinking about how you can help. And the following slides are going to be going over how SCCF conducts our business as well as our client demographics. So what the city of Stanton does for us every year is a twenty thousand dollar award to us through your line item budget. And we also have an MOU to do services for those in Stanton. So one that I do want to note, like I said earlier, Sean Zirkel with Panoramic InfoSec. He started with our S2V program in January. Since he launched that business last November, he has since generated twelve million in revenue and created forty-two jobs. Many of those jobs he is still, they're still open. Many of them are going to be remote due to talent retention and talent recruitment that we're struggling with in the Shenandoah Valley. He has hired seventeen so far. Seven of them have relocated here across the region, but that is one thing we need to keep an eye on when we're looking at economic development across the region is talent recruitment to support these type entrepreneurs is going to be a huge thing for our growth. So here's a little bit about our demographics. One of the notes that I really want to bring attention to is on women and minority owned businesses that we support. We're really proud of that sixty-nine percent. So sixty-nine percent of the businesses that we serve, not only in Stanton, but across the entire region are women or minority owned. And that's a big part of what we focus on because so oftentimes they have harder access to capital, harder access to support and are often underrepresented. So as we continue to move in that direction, we, you'll hear a little bit later about the Community Navigator Award that we were just awarded a couple of weeks ago and how that will expand our work for women and entrepreneurs of color. So Startup Shenandoah Valley. This was part of a one point two million dollar grant approved in June of twenty twenty. This is through GoVirginia. So GoVirginia is a great funding source for new projects across the Commonwealth. We are part of Region Eight. So it's the largest award that Region Eight has ever been awarded. And so cash to the organization was six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The rest was match. It was a three-pronged approach. The first part is it created two entrepreneurial ecosystem builders. So what that means is they're pretty much navigators for these entrepreneurs, connecting them to resources, finding mentors, connecting them to programs that aren't just ours, but ones of the small business development centers and ones of Walker Program and all of those other great things that happen across our region. So these people are paid to help people navigate through getting a business started and expanding it. The next part of that was getting equipment into places, just like the great equipment you've added to this room here. So getting virtual equipment across the entire region and maker spaces and co-working spaces to better support the connection between entrepreneurs all across our region. Our service area has expanded to Winchester all the way down to Lexington and Rockbridge. And so with that expansive of a region, you can't really have in-person events and effectively support all the entrepreneurs we want to serve. So we pivoted even before the pandemic hit to virtual content. And so this equipment and infrastructure build out really helped us connect to those entrepreneurs no matter where they chose to live. The third part is the S2V program in and of itself. It's an accelerator incubator program. So what an entrepreneur does is they enter in to eight weeks of coaching. It is customized to the entrepreneur. So they can be in a grow phase. They can be in attraction phase or they can be in a validation phase. They go through these eight weeks of coaching, then they, then they enter what we call the implementation period. You can only execute on what you've learned. You can't really create new things in eight weeks. So we know they need some time to actually execute on everything that they've learned. For some entrepreneurs, it could take three weeks, others it could take three months, others it could take three years. Just depends on the entrepreneur. Once they successfully implemented their goals that they learned in those eight weeks, they come back for more coaching. So that's why that model is called acceleration and incubation. So we're accelerating them through a lot of content. And then we do wraparound services for them during that incubation period until they're ready to go back for more acceleration. So a little data on that. So far over the two cohorts, we do have a third cohort that's running right now. We have generated thirteen million in revenue by those participants. Forty-six now forty-seven jobs have been created by those companies and thirty-four mentors across the region have been actively engaged. So you'll see on that map graph on the left, these are the placements of all of the companies that have participated. So it's a really good dispersment across the region. You can see there's still some gaps though. So that's where our active targeting is going to happen over these next couple of cohorts, really trying to bring in more Lexington folks, Page County, Highland and Bass. The next one is our flagship program. This was a part of who SCCF has always been. It started out as Core Four back in two thousand and eight and then expanded into the Business Bootcamp Course, our Business Planning Course, and then to Business Bootcamp. And so this program is an eight week course that really helps entrepreneurs figure out, do I even want to be an entrepreneur? What the heck goes into getting a business started? What all do I need to be preparing myself for? It gives them a great foundation for launching that business. That program has since expanded from mostly serving Stanton residents to its transition to a virtual program and we also white label it. And so we do that program in Waynesboro for Grow Waynesboro. We do it in Lexington for the Walker Program and we did it in Shenandoah County through Rev Up Shenka. So one of the big changes that happened in twenty twenty is we had some really amazing funders come to us and say, we really want to help entrepreneurs get access to this. And so pretty much all of our participants over twenty twenty were scholarshiped into the program rather than having to pay for it, thanks to those grants from some amazing partners. So you'll see here, we had twenty fully funded SCCF scholarships. Eighty percent of our twenty twenty-one cohort was eighty-seven percent women and thirty-four percent entrepreneurs of color. And we've had nine guest instructors who have consistently engaged with us over this program in particular for the past five years. So future growth, this is where I'll spend a little bit of time on. Back in June of twenty twenty, when we got the one point two million from GoVirginia, we realized that we were on to something. If we continue to collaborate with these seventeen organizations, if we continue to grow and become this ecosystem convenor, there's a lot of opportunity for how we can grow the entrepreneurial ecosystem. So in January of twenty twenty-one, we were invited by the Center on Rural Innovation. It's a nationwide organization based out of Vermont to join their Regional Rural Innovation Initiative. That was ten months of very intensive technical assistance. And they helped us write a one point five million dollar bill to scale proposal, which was seven hundred and fifty thousand cash from the federal government and seven hundred and fifty thousand in match from partners like the Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport. And so we applied for that program back in April through the support of the Stanton EDA as well. And we were awarded that grant in September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. There was over six hundred and fifty applications and thirty-two grantees. So very competitive federal program, really excited about the next three years for this. And it creates a common language and storytelling campaign for the entire region, which is why we tapped the airport. We said, hey, you're really good at telling this story. You're really good at reinventing where you need to go next. And as well as Shenandoah Valley Partnership and other localities and other great organizations to really figure out what story do we need to be telling to draw more people here and encourage more people inside the region to pursue their dream. The next part is it creates a digital hub. So people will be able to get access to these resources without having to go through people all the time. One of the biggest barriers to resources is you have to know someone. So what happens if we take everything that we know and put it out there for everyone to access? And so that digital platform will be coming online in late summer of twenty twenty-two. And then the third part of that is additional tech incubation. So we're going to be focusing on tech and tech enabled companies trying to drive more of those high wage jobs within the region and support the tech startups that already exist here. So that's yay, big grant award. Awesome.
Yes.
We also said, okay, let's, you know, let's aim for the fences and let's also apply for Community Navigator and just see what happens. So Community Navigator is a one million dollar proposal that we put together in July. It is to fund five partner organizations across the region and it trains ecosystem builders on effective strategy and also supports these five organizations as they support women and entrepreneurs of color. That had over seven hundred applications and fifty-one were awarded. SCCF was the only organization in Virginia that was awarded this opportunity. So we rewarded one million dollars two weeks ago. And that will fund Grow Waynesboro, that will fund the Rise Organization, that will fund Walker Program down in Lexington. It will fund B Cubed in Harrisonburg. It will fund Shandau University and the Institute for Entrepreneurship and it will fund SCCF in continuing to expand the ecosystem building work that we've been doing in particular for the past three years.
That's impressive.
Thank you. Yeah. So one point seven five million in grants. Looks like we've got some great growth potential, not only for Stanton, but for the region as a whole. So just want to say thank you to you guys. This wouldn't have happened without the original vision in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. Also wouldn't have happened without the continued support of localities like Stanton. So we're really excited to see where we go next, but that is the trajectory that we've been on. We seem to thrive in crisis. So we saw the crisis back in two thousand and eight. We saw an opportunity again during the pandemic to really figure out how do we successfully help entrepreneurs and those who are often overlooked.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions by council members?
This is Brenda Mead. I have a couple of questions.
Sure thing.
Ms. Irwin, are the entrepreneurs that are coming to Stanton or these entrepreneurs in your program, are they, are they Stanton residents or are they coming to Stanton from other places?
It's a mixture. So you do have quite a few. In terms of business bootcamp, most of our clients end up being from Stanton. That has shifted a little bit since we created the virtual program. In terms of S2V, it's a pretty even split, twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent across the four hubs in the region. So none of them really come to Stanton in terms of utilizing the service. They find out and we do things virtually. But we have had some businesses relocating here in the region that were from Fredericksburg and outside of the region that came here because of the opportunities that we have in the region.
Thanks. And another question. You said that through the one program, forty-six jobs were created?
Yes.
And, and it's just that, is that just in the past year?
That's since January twenty twenty-one.
Okay. And, and can you tell me a little bit about what kinds of jobs these are that are being created? Are they, you know, what industries are they in? Are they remote jobs or local jobs?
It's a big mixture. A big percentage of those jobs are coming from the one company Panoramic InfoSec. So they're cybersecurity related. They are also social engineering and then others of them are marketing opportunities, operations manager for some of our manufacturers. And then some contract work for design services for many of the entrepreneurs who are in like manufacturing.
So are these employees, do they live in Stanton or are they largely remote?
Some of them are remote. Some of them have relocated here. I know in particular for SCCF, we're a growing organization as well. We've grown from a staff of me in January of twenty nineteen to we'll have a staff of fifteen this upcoming January. I have since recruited three of those individuals from outside of the region and they're all relocating to Stanton.
That's good news. What industries do you see as being the largest areas of growth? You mentioned, you certainly mentioned technology and I, and I think that's great. What, what other areas of growth do you see?
So it's a, a technology and technology enabled companies. And so one of the big things that we're seeing is ag tech. We can utilize all of the centers of excellence that we already have around agriculture. So one of our companies is Valley UAV. They're utilizing drone technologies to identify invasive species of plants within your fields to know exactly where to spray. And so we see a lot of ag tech, ag tech popping up here. Another big one that we're seeing is around data security. With our proximity to DC, we can definitely create a center of excellence around data security. So that's one we will be focusing on. Others is actually like manufacturing because of all of the supply chain issues that happened in twenty twenty, you're starting to see a lot of our local entrepreneurs want to shift into sourcing their products and manufacturing their products here. And so you're going to be seeing some incubation work around micro manufacturing happening as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much. We're running short on time. So thank you. We appreciate you coming out and sharing such wonderful news with us.
Thank you.
All right. With that, that takes us to break. We're supposed to come back at six o'clock. Will that give everyone enough time? All right. Let's shoot for six o'clock, guys. We are now on break. Okay, it's six o'clock. So we're back into the work session. And the next item is item number five. Discussion of twenty twenty-two legislative program. Mr. Rosenberg.
And Mayor Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, will present this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the second discussion. We had a very brief discussion about the legislative program at our meeting on October fourteenth. Since that time, staff has put together a proposed legislative program for us to discuss this evening. And then it will be adopted at the next meeting on December ninth. And I'll also like to mention that Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli have both accepted the invitation to speak to you all at the next meeting about the legislative program. So what I'm going to do, because there are a lot of changes in this document, I'm going to walk through each major change and then if I can just get through those and then happy to answer questions or facilitate a discussion after I complete walking through these changes. I'm going to go with the markup document that I sent because that's where all my notes are, but you can follow in any way you wish and I'm going to go by page number. So starting on page one, the first section that's marked out and the only reason that section is marked out is because we cannot identify in the Virginia Minister. we cannot identify in the Virginia Municipal League Legislative Package where these legislative principles were located. I believe at one time they did do these, but it doesn't appear in their new legislative package that these are there. So the only reason this is removed is because we were referring to VML and that didn't seem correct. So that's the only reason this section was removed. On that same page, on number two, under education, you'll see several references in here because the General Assembly did provide quite a bit of funding to certain areas using CARES money, using ARPA money. So this is an example of that where they did put some money into the preschool initiative, but those funds are one-time. So it was important to also state that the funding should be ongoing and permanent. So while we recognize that we appreciate what they did with the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, it's important to have a funding stream that's permanent and ongoing. On page two, number five, similar situation here where city council, we're stating that there's appreciation that the General Assembly dedicated CARES Act funds for school HVAC renovations. However, there should again be continuing resources for these types of initiatives. Number six is a new item. This was at the request of Councilmember Darby. This was in response to legislation signed this past session that removes the requirement that school principals report various misdemeanors to law enforcement. Such as sexual battery, which when I was doing my notes today, I realized that it's not sexual assault. That was my mistake. That's a felony. So it should say sexual battery. And I'll fix that for the next version, which it also includes stalking, violation of protective order, and violent threats that occur on school property. On page three, under item D, Chesapeake Bay water quality, this language did not change, but I just wanted to make a note that in the last General Assembly session, the General Assembly did put 25 million into SLAF, the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund, and another 35 million for the agricultural BMP cost share program. But this still falls short of what's in the legislative package. So I just wanted to make a note that while they did commit some funding to these items, it wasn't 50 million or 100 million. Under transportation, number one, added some language about continued improvements to Interstate 81 to address ongoing traffic and safety concerns. Under item three, again, this is an example where there were some, there was some funding added for multi-use trails. And that's a good start. But that there should still be support, additional funding for the other items that were in the package, such as non-motorized transportation, trails, pathways, green corridors, et cetera. Under four, there was some language added that to acknowledge that there was during the General Assembly Session of 2021, a Virginia Transit Equity and Modernization Study that will occur and the report, final report will be done by mid-2022. And if you go online, you can actually put your email in to get updates on this report. So we'll be watching this closely. Under F, libraries, this is another example where there was a million dollars restored in library aid for FY22, but it still requires further attention. So we wanted to make sure that this remained in the legislative program. Under G, similar situation. There was $800,000 provided for state park acquisition and 25 million in ARPA funds allocated to park maintenance and construction. But again, this, those are one-time dollars, so we need to continue to ask, advocate for Virginia State Parks and for increased funding. I know you've heard a lot about broadband. There have been significant funds put into broadband across the Commonwealth. But again, it's one of those situations where we can't let the attention dwindle. And so supporting ongoing funding for the expansion of broadband infrastructure is really important and remains in this program. Under item J, opioids, that will be a discussion on council's agenda this evening. So we're recognizing the establishment of the opioid abatement authority, but also advocating for additional state programs. Under fair elections, while there was quite a bit done in the last year, it's important to keep this item in the program to continue to bring attention to the fact that there's still more work to be done in terms of increased voter participation, automatic registration, has someone addressed it all, for instance, and expanded voting hours. Under part M, this entire section, these are new items that I addressed with the Valley CSB. Dr. McClanahan and I had several conversations. And so this is a coordinated language through our local CSB and reflects the legislative priorities of the state associations of CSPs. So there's quite a bit in here. Let's see. I'm not sure I'll walk through every single one of these, but it includes workforce crisis, community service funding to address workforce crisis, community services boards, and funding, increased funding for outpatient services of Step VA, providing funds to decrease the priority one waitlist of individuals with developmental disabilities, and then supporting permanent supportive housing. And then the last one, which is, has to do with detoxification and crisis intervention services, which was in the program last year. And that still remains a priority. Under section O, Middle River Regional Jail Staffing, these updates were provided by Jeff Newton, Superintendent of jails of the jail, and reflect the current legislative issues for the jail. Includes fully funding staff positions, and he has included a chart that these physicians are sorely needed, given the capacity of the jail. And then the second item on here is related to inmates which should be transferred to the state. And so the state needs to pay special attention to that. And we're in act legislation that requires the state to accept state responsible inmates in a timely manner. Under P, first responders, the first section, both of these sections were requested by Chief Barber of Fire and Rescue. The first section was in the package last year. It has to do with mental health awareness programs for fire and emergency medical services and funding those. The second portion is related to the legislative priorities of the Virginia Fire Chiefs and includes enhanced benefits for the Virginia Retirement System, expansion of the workers' compensation, cancer presumption, returning the funding stream of the Line of Duty Act back to the Commonwealth that's been with the locality for over a decade now, and a dedicated emergency manager with a dedicated funding stream from the state. Under section R, plastics recycling facility, as we did currently begin with our central recycling facility, we started recycling plastics again, but it's still a stressed market. It's still very limited. And so this is an important issue to continue to stress. Under, on page 10, section V, sales tax on food for home consumption, this is also a new item. And this is asking the General, the General Assembly to reduce or eliminate the sales tax on food for home consumption, which is the two and a half percent portion of the sales tax. And it's just related to grocery items and prepared foods to assist in dealing with food insecurity in our community.
Ms. Beauregard, who proposed that item?
This was a request of Councilmember Darby.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Under item W, water quality, I did speak with Phil Martin, who is the Director of the Augusta County Service Authority. And there are two, there's three items in here that he asked us to include that are in an agreement with the Virginia Association of Municipal Waste Water Agencies, which, one, support adequate funding for the Water and Quality Improvement Fund. Two, to make sure that the, we would support the amendment to Virginia Code that would enable political subdivisions to self-certify equipment for our own facilities. And three was require the development of any drinking water maximum contaminant levels for PFAS set by the Virginia Department of Health comply with scientific and technical requirements. That's a lot of verbiage. He has asked us to include these in our agenda. And you'll see on the next section, actually on page 12, there's a stricken section. And Mr. Martin said that this could be removed from our priority package, that this issue was addressed in the last session. And so any of the harmful language that used to exist in this legislation or in these mandates is no longer there. So these issues have been addressed. So no additional support is necessary. So I'll stop there. Those are the major changes in the legislative program for 2022. Happy to answer questions or receive any feedback on the program.
All right. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Counselor Holmes.
If we were to reduce the tax on food and stuff, how would we make that up as far as the city goes? I mean, some of that portion comes to us from the, from the state, correct?
Correct. So it would have, the state would have to, this would be a state imposed reduction. And we did speak to Maggie Reagan, the Commissioner of Revenue, and it's very hard to say exactly what the loss in revenue would be. Her estimate, however, is that it would equate to approximately 20% of the total sales tax the city receives, which is about a million dollars annually.
Any additional comments or questions?
Well, I think the point is how do we make that up? I mean, you can't just, you know, what are we going to cut? Close down the library or, you know, don't have police or, you know, you have to think big picture. You can't just like, it's like no car tax. I mean, we saw the results of that soundbite. And so I think we should be cautious in, in doing this without, without, if somebody could say, oh, this is how we'll make it up, then I'm eager to hear it.
Isn't this very much a moot point though with our new legislation and new legislators that are going in? They've been elected on that idea. And I think it's going to go away anyway.
Right, yeah, but we need to figure out some way, we need to figure out some way to replace that that tax or the money that we'd be losing. I mean, that's a big chunk of change.
It hasn't gone away yet.
No.
So we do need to decide whether we're going to support that based on whether the city of Stanton, the residents of the city of Stanton can afford to find another $200,000, which is a penny of property taxes. So I think, you know, since, since Ms. Darby put this on the legislative program, perhaps she's got some ideas.
Miss May, my idea is that we discuss it here this evening. So I'm glad we are.
Well, let's, you know, I think that, you know, we just have to think about, you know, the lack of income for the city. I mean, you know, a lot of the things that we've gotten from the state and the federal government are like one-time things. That money's not going to be there down the road. So we just need to make sure that, you know, and I, there's so many places in town that we need to be spending some money, you know, it's just, our infrastructure could definitely use a lot of.
Sure could, but, but doesn't, but if I'm not mistaken, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure you will correct me, but I think the food tax, if I'm correctly, on Governor Youngkin-elect was for one year. And so we're talking a one-year thing, a one-year proposition. And with all the monies that we are getting, Mr. Rosenberg or Leslie, help me out, of all the ARPA funds we're getting, I mean, it's not like we're going to be basically having an empty pool there. And then after that, it will come back online.
So Mr. Robertson, your understanding is that, that, that the governor, the governor-elect
Yep.
plans to make this tax exemption on groceries just a one-year thing?
That's what I heard. Now, I could be wrong, and like I said, but I had heard that the food tax would, would be a one-year, one-year proposition.
And Ms. Darby, is that consistent with your information on this?
I have not heard that, Miss May.
And so I guess we go back to you again with the question, since you put this on the program, how, how do we make up that revenue?
What ideas do you have? I'm open to discussing.
I didn't put it on the agenda, Ms. Darby.
It doesn't matter, Miss May. You're, you're, you're part of this council.
I am part of this council and that's why I'm asking the question.
Does anyone have any ideas?
My idea is to remove it from our program.
Well, how do we, how do we, are there other things on our program that you all have kept consistent for years and years that, you know, are cause, you know, I'm sure there's issues there that haven't had funding.
Well, that's a non sequitur and it doesn't respond. That's a non sequitur.
Okay, can I act like a school teacher? One at a time, please.
Yeah, I was going to say, Counselor Darby, it is written here dealing with food insecurities in our community. So I'm assuming that was the motivation for putting that on the legislative.
I know that there's been many times throughout, you know, the past months of council that we hear about how folks are struggling due to rising costs with, you know, the pandemic and, and there's housing insecurities. I believe there has been mention of food insecurities and things like that. So I do think that it's something that we do need to give at least discussion to. And that's why I put it here to see if there's something that we can do to help our citizens.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not against doing this. I just think that we've got to be prepared somewhere else to make that money up.
I agree.
So either we might have to raise a tax on, on real estate or something else. I mean, personal property, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make that up. You know, and especially if they make it permanent, you're going to have to make it up. You know, my tax will be permanent.
No, I'm not in favor of it if we don't have a clear plan on how we'd replace that revenue. I'm, I'm not in favor of having it in there.
I agree.
Mr. Rosenberg, this is just for discussion. And Ms. Beauregard, is the plan to bring this back in December for discussion and consideration?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So can we continue the discussion in December?
This is, is this not the time? I guess I thought this was the time we were going to have these discussions.
We have one more minute. We have one more minute and to get back on schedule. So during that time, I was going to suggest during that time, Mr. Rosenberg, maybe you could meet with Mr. Trey or to see if there's any other avenues that we could take to make up the difference, if this is the will of the council.
I have another question.
Okay.
It relates to the General Assembly should reinstate the requirement that school principals alert law enforcement about misdemeanor offenses that occur on school property. That's, that's just feeding the schools-to-prisons pipeline. Those, those children are, are, in our schools are then introduced into the criminal justice system. And I think that giving, continuing to give school, the school board and the school superintendent the ability to discern when he or she needs to involve law enforcement is, is the appropriate way, just as it is now. I believe that principals now have the authority or the ability to make those decisions. I think we should continue to allow them to do so because we know that, that children in, in our public schools who are introduced to the criminal justice system at that young age then become, they are more likely to become part of the criminal justice system in the future. And that impacts primarily minorities, people of color, and especially girls who are people of color. So I can't, I absolutely cannot support that.
I don't know that I agree. I don't, I haven't seen any data that shows that people of color are committing the misdemeanors at a high level.
I didn't say they were committing the misdemeanors at a higher level. I said they were being reported to the criminal justice system at a higher rate than other people are. So I really do believe.
Wouldn't we want to report all of them instead of arbitrariness?
No, absolutely not. I think a high, a principal, a superintendent should have the ability to use discretion in those situations. What this What this says, it says, is that they're required to alert law enforcement. And I, I just think that's an overreach and just feeds that schools-to-prisons pipeline.
Disagree.
Councillor Dole.
I have a different viewpoint on this. And that this is a, we, citizens elect a school board to deal with school board issues. And I'm sure that they have an opinion and they're going to have it in their legislative program. I, I think it's inappropriate for us to be messing with school board areas.
Well, Ed, the VML does have the Education and Human Service Committee, so it, it does deal with topics such as this. So I think that's why it was suggested to be put into the legislative program.
It's not in VML's legislative program.
Um, I, I'm not sure about that. Well, you know what? Maybe it's not, maybe it's not, and I will go back and re-review it. But there have been some issues that came to light after the legislative program was initiated.
Why don't we trust our school board and let them submit it with their legislative?
Well, they can submit it and then we, we can submit, submit it as well.
We're supposed to only fund the school system and they make the decision.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because our citizens elect them to make those decisions for our school.
That, that is true. However, the General Assembly does make the final decisions concerning the Commonwealth. And when you have a school system in which, Ms. Beauregard, help me out here, this is dealing with sexual misconduct? And that is the focal point of this particular item?
No, no, it's not. It's just it all, it says misdemeanors. It doesn't say what kind of misdemeanors. So that means that the school has to make a, a, an evaluation of what kind of misdemeanor it is. They've got to, they, they have to make that decision before they contact.
I'm going to let Ms. Beauregard answer my question.
I don't, I have not read this bill, I'll be honest with you. I've just read some summaries of it. There may be, well, be a list of the misdemeanors they're talking about. The ones I talked about in the, a little while ago are the ones that were specifically drawn out. So I don't know practically how this works at the school level. I can't answer that question necessarily.
Well, I'm sure the school system does not want any sort of crimes to go unnoticed within the school system. I'm sure that they want to take proper action and to provide proper counseling or whatever the case may be towards such situations.
And we should trust them to do that.
I believe this is. We certainly, we certainly can give them support with, by doing just this.
No, this, this is a requirement. This is, this is a mandate. I thought we didn't do mandates. This is a mandate that, that schools.
Oh, that was a nice play on terms, Brenda.
This is a mandate that school officials call the police when they identify a misdemeanor situation. And I believe that school officials are the ones who should have.
Well, then we need to eliminate the Human Services and Education Department within VML.
Ms. Maed, I, I know.
That's a way overreach.
That's tied into it.
That's ridiculous.
What you're saying, Councillor Maed.
That's a hyperbole.
Crimes to go unnoticed and children not to receive the proper help that they may need. Early intervention is key, and you're wanting this to be overlooked.
This does not, this does not say there can be early intervention.
But the thing is, the law enforcement can get in and provide the proper counseling.
And Ms. Maed.
The criminal justice system is inadequate when it comes to counseling.
The judicial system takes it from there.
And mental health.
Ms. Maed.
The, the criminal justice.
Vice Mayor Robertson, Vice Mayor Robertson is being recognized.
Ms. Maed. And, and, and Ms. Dole, all I can say is that a council member put it in. It was put in there. And next month, when it comes time to take a vote, if it's four to three to stay, it stays. If it ain't, it'll go.
Yeah, and we already know what that's going to be.
Okay, all right.
Yes, ma'am, probably so.
All right. Let's move on. Let's move on.
Well, I had some other questions, but clearly there's no point.
Well, we need, we, we need to move on. 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 Because we are over time. We need to move on. We need to move on to the next item because we will have further discussion and consideration at the next meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Rosenberg?
We will include this item on your work session agenda for the next meeting. That's correct.
Okay.
Brenda Maed, we need more than 20 minutes then. I'm sorry, but 20 minutes is totally inadequate to have this discussion.
All right. Moving on to the next item is roll call. We are now at the portion of the agenda called Roll Call. Roll Call allows each council member an opportunity to bring forth matters for staff follow-up, either during the same meeting or at a future work session or regular meeting, if additional time is required to respond to a council member's inquiry. All right, with that, we are now at Roll Call, item number six, and I will begin with Councillor Maed.
I have nothing.
All right. Councillor Dole.
Well, I would like to just comment on the fact that it doesn't matter what I say or what I think. And it doesn't matter that the citizens elected me to represent their viewpoint. Because it's already very clear that when we vote on anything, if you four down there have had your little get-together and decided how you're going to vote, it doesn't matter.
There has been no get-together by this council.
That's why we need to have the discussion.
No, we were having. And then Vice Mayor Robertson said, well, basically next month we're going to vote. And it's, if it's four to three, then tough. So thank you very much. You've made it very clear to me.
The vote is not the vote until the vote has been taken, and we will have further discussion. Councillor Holmes.
It means nothing.
It, it, we'll have further discussion. Councillor Holmes.
I just, I, no, I just think that the way we're acting is ridiculous and it just, it just, it's, we have to scream to get our points across. And nobody, I mean, it's just, it's just, it's sad. It's just sad. And that's all I got to say.
All right. Councillor Claffey.
I, I've been aware of getting a tremendous amount of emails concerning the SPCA of the clinic, and I was wondering if City Manager Rosenberg could prepare a statement explaining how Waynesboro got in charge of this situation and how they're the ones that have brought it up and nothing has come to us yet in the form of a proposal, recommendation, anything. And it's sort of out of our hands at this point. And I, I'm certainly reading all these letters and appreciating people's views and, and I'm definitely an, an animal lover myself. And I know several members of this council have lost pets this year. And we hate to see it as much as anybody. But I don't think there's a understanding out here in our, in our Stanton, Waynesboro, Augusta County area as to what the procedures are, what the, what the steps are. So if you could possibly prepare that and, and come up with a statement before, I'm afraid that tonight's Matters from the Public is going to be everybody telling us about their pet. And really, I, I mean, I appreciate, I love a pet, but I, I don't think they understand it. It hasn't come to us yet.
Mr. Claffey, I have some remarks prepared to make during Matters from the City Manager, just ahead of Matters from the Public.
Right.
That I think will provide some clarity to those who we expect to be here this evening. It's not going to be very different from what I think they've already heard from my counterparts in Waynesboro and Augusta County. So I, where they have attended meetings over the course of the last week, as recently as last evening in Augusta County. But I, I, I am prepared to go into that. And just for the benefit of council members, the, the history of Waynesboro being the point locality, you know, we're, we're all fiscal agents for different regional operations. So for example, Augusta County is the fiscal agent for the regional jail. We are the fiscal agent for VASAP and Blue Ridge Court Services. And so in, you know, slicing and dicing the responsibility for these regional bodies or entities, it happens to be the case that Waynesboro, you know, well before my time, here or with Augusta County, was the fiscal agent for, well, actually, they became the fiscal agent in 2011, I believe, which is the year in which the, the region, Augusta Regional SPCA ceased providing contract services, which they did previously. And at that point, the three localities took over the operation of a regional shelter. And amongst the three localities, it was determined that Waynesboro would be the fiscal agent, and it has been since then. So that's just a little bit of that piece of the story for your benefit. But during Matters from the City Manager, I will be prepared to go into more detail about what we are doing today.
Thank you.
Councillor Darby.
Ms. Rosenberg, can you give an update or tell me, is there anything, are we doing anything for the West End in regards to the upcoming holidays with Christmas decorations? I know that's come, we've talked about that previously.
What I can tell you is that the West End Business Association is working with the former director, the former executive director of the SDVA, Julie Markowitz, on a, a longer-term project for branding and decorations in the West End, not only during the holiday season, but also throughout the year, but on a short-term basis. So I've been working with Michelle Bixler, the Communications Manager, on coming up with a, a very simple banner that I think we will arrange to have displayed probably in the Michael Oregon bed on West Beverly Street that has a holiday theme to it. And it's, it's intended to be a short-term gesture. But, but Ms. Markowitz is working with the Business Association on a longer-term initiative that is, is not necessarily reliant on funding from the city.
Thank you.
And, and I will say that she has engaged, she was engaged with the Business Association before the pandemic at my request. And has willingly and enthusiastically re-engaged as we come out of the pandemic and is excited to be working with, with the Business Association.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Okay. Mr. Rosenberg, I actually have nothing for you tonight, but I do want to answer Ms. Dole and, and Ms. Maed. As I said during our retreat, and you made a statement and you, you need to understand, you made a statement, you know, that you were elected by your people to represent. And I fully expect you to do that. But that ship floats both ways. We were elected to represent the citizens that voted us into office as well. And we each try to do that to the best of our ability. And when I made the statement, when the vote happens, and it, you know, here recently, there have been numerous, and I mean numerous votes, that this council has been seven-oh. There's times we do agree, but there are going to be times that we don't agree on certain things. Like I told you in, in retreat, we all grew up in different situations, different places. That's how we come to have our beliefs, our values.
Can you keep your mask?
Can I? Yes, I'm so sorry. I don't want to aim in your direction. But, you know, like I simply said, we all have different belief systems. And that's why we sometimes vote as we believe. We vote as we vote. Just because we go against you, it doesn't mean, or if I vote against you, or, or vice, or sometimes with you, it doesn't mean that I, it's, it's not personal. This is simply how we were elected to vote to the best of our ability. Please don't take it personally. Yes, there's be times that we're going to agree. And there's going to be times that we don't agree. But that's what people elected us for. Please don't take it personally.
All right, so let me respond to that. The legislative program has historically been compiled by consensus. We never put anything in there that people were opposed to because it has to be one voice speaking. These are the things that we agree are important for our locality. And you just blew that up.
Well, okay, and, and if you make that statement, I understand that. Like for the last 10 or 12 year, or 10 or years, or whatever, that you were mayor. Exactly. You said things that everybody agrees on. When it was six to one, the one couldn't even get anything. She couldn't even get a second. So what?
That's not true.
Okay. In, in, in any case, this is a situation where, like I said, it is simply a thing where different voices, different areas of people have something to put in. You have some things in there. We have some things in there. We may not all agree, but that's what, the way it goes. I, I'm sorry.
I'll be putting some more things in it between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, we need to go ahead and move on.
Mayor Oaks, just one thing. I, I thought we were elected to represent everybody in the city, not a particular quadrant of the city, because we don't have wards, so to speak, you know, and I, I think we all need to take in what everybody believes and, and not just one side or the other. I mean, there's a lot of areas that we can compromise on, but we never compromise.
Oh, I don't know that I agree with that.
Terry, I don't, I disagree with that. And, and, and I wholeheartedly disagree with that. We never compromise. And like I said, y, y, you take it to the point where just because we don't compromise on a certain subject, we all, we all have personal beliefs. We all have guts that this is what we believe in. We, we were elected to do that. And, and, and if it, if I disagree with you on a certain point, I'm not going to say, okay, I'm going to vote for you just because, so we can make it seven-oh. It's just, that's just not the way it works.
That's, that's.
Okay, all right. Leah, let's move this along because if you want to continue this at a later time. All right, we really need to go ahead. Mr. Rosenberg, I do not have any questions for you. So that takes us to item number seven, Closed Meeting for Consultation with Legal Counsel for Necessary Legal-Related Advice and Discussion Regarding the Order to Show Calls Concerning the Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court Facilities. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to enter a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel for necessary legal-related advice and discussion regarding the order of show calls that will serve on each council member concerning the Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court facilities located in the District Court's building at 6 East Johnson Street, Stanton, pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and 2.2-3711A7.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second, Mayor Oaks.
All right, Councillor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Wallace, please call the roll.
Ms. Maed?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we are now in closed session. To come at a closed meeting?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed-meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second.
All right, we have Councillor Darby is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Wallace, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Yeah. Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes is stepped out. Mr. Claffey? Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Maed?
Aye.
Looks like he is abstaining.
Motion carries.
Well, let's, let's wait and.
Okay.
All right.
And get Mr. Holmes.
One minute, and I got to get started on time. No, we're starting on time.
We have to have the vote on the close.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, but.
Well, if we, if we're late, we're late.
Aye, he says aye.
Motion carries.
All right. So that means we are now finished with the work session meeting and we are on break for one minute.